Read this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you just heard, this meeting is being recorded. So we ask that if anybody has any questions or comments, that they please use the raise hand function. I've also enabled in the chat for people to be able to directly chat with me, so you can send me a message and please state your name and your street for the record.
Well, excuse me, remember tonight, there's no public hearing tonight.
That's right. Yes, I'm sort of running on autopilot. So I think for tonight's purposes, just to let everybody know that if you're in the waiting room, I will message you to make sure that we have the correct information handy before admitting you in. And other than that, the council is considering the Thrive letter, which has been distributed and posted on the town website. Residents had an opportunity as well to make some comments.
Oh, you're start, oh, I'm sorry, you're start. Are you starting your staff report?
Sorry, I'm maybe John, probably jumping ahead. I apologize.
Okay.
I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
So I think you made it clear that we have addressed the possibility of anyone interfering with this soon by way of the town manager will be inviting everyone in one by one and and your identification is required. Just want to make that clear. So thank you very much. So the first item on this brief council meeting agenda is discussion motion to consider approval of a joint statement to the county council regarding Thrive Montgomery 2050, and I will turn it over to the town manager for his staff report on this item.
Yes, I got a little bit ahead of myself before. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. As everybody here is probably aware, but just for the record, the town council hosted a forum last Monday, November 8th, to get resident feedback on the county's Thrive Montgomery 2050 update to its general plan. And the council has been working to update a draft to present a unified comment and message to the county council, incorporating some of the feedback that was received from residents. We heard from a few residents last week, as well as have had some messages emailed over, all of which have been shared with and made available to the town council and posted on the town website for folks to review. I also just wanted to point out as well that while our council is sending or is planning and considering sending a letter representing their shared thoughts on this issue, nothing is precluding town residents from also sending their own messages regarding Thrive to the county council and planning board. And in fact, what we're planning to do is to gather all the comments that were sent our way and to also send them to the planning board and county council to let them know about the comments that we received regarding Thrive. With that, I turn it back over.
So just to clarify, so everybody understands. So last week, the council had requested a meeting to consider the Thrive 2050 joint statement to the county council. And at that meeting, which did have public participation, the council decided that the decision would be deferred until tonight. And in the meantime, the opportunity was given for any member of the public to comment on the the draft. And the maker of the the originator of the draft, council member Kumar, had agreed to read them all, share them, and consider amending the draft. And it's my belief that whatever the council agrees to as the thrive 2050 unified position, that any comment that is made by a resident that is transferred to the county council will only enhance that document. So I was delighted with the number of residents that commented on the draft. I think you know, there's no right and wrong here. It's everybody's comment is valuable and respected. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to the council president to lead the discussion on the and to make the council's decision.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was hoping to have council member Kumar just briefly describe how he's updated this letter based on inputs received. And then then I think council members can ask questions or provide comments, and then we can move to a vote.
Thank you, Council President Circo, and thank you, Mayor Slaven. I also want to reiterate that, you know, our attempts here to come together on a joint statement should not preclude residents from making their own statements and submitting their own letters, a number of whom have already done that. And to that, I'm just, as I may have mentioned to a number of you, delighted that we have been attempted to come together on a joint position. I think that speaks volumes about all of us and I think the overall sort of strength of our community. And then I also want to make sure that we recognize that this is a joint effort with with council member Debbie Heller, who has been a great partner in pulling this draft together and a great ally in bringing all of these ideas together. So in terms of practically speaking, since the since last week and following the feedback we received, I updated the note and the there are a couple of substantial noteworthy pieces. One is, you know, I added a section in in our sort of high level statements on the unique aspects of densification for our town. This was a recommendation made by council member Robin Barr, and it was also sort of resonated with a number of the resident comments that we received. And and in parallel to that, there's a specific recommendation to update the attainable housing chapter and thrive with that aspect of densification. Beyond that, the number of the comments were very sort of minor, I would say, relatively speaking, with points of emphasis, like saying that we respect that thrive itself is ambitious on climate change, for example, that we, you know, we want consultation to include everyone, not any specific group, because we believe that there's been a huge gap in the consultation process since this document was introduced. So things like that. But already speaking minor updates. So on the whole, the document is very much close to what we considered last week with these specific updates that I just mentioned.
Thank you, Kabir. I'd like to go around the council to ask for his comments or thoughts on the letter that you've this final draft that you've prepared. Shannon, can we start with you? If you're available.
Sure, sorry. I think that the letter is good, and thank you, Kabir and Debbie, for organizing this all and putting our thoughts into like bulleted points. You know, I thought that Leanne's email was interesting, like earlier today that the mayor had sent around and you know, I would like to know like more information in terms of like housing and capacity and, you know, all sorts of stuff from Frenchip Heights, like I feel like, you know, Robin suggested and recommended for the last go around. So I think that that would be a helpful indicator to see, you know, in our areas. And I don't know if there's places to find this out, like what kind of affordable housing is out there. Is it really being maximized to its fullest use? Like, are people, you know, watching it and making sure that it goes for the right usage? And, you know, just any of that data that we can gather from what's already existing to help us kind of plan and shape what this future looks like, I think is helpful. And I don't know if that's something that, you know, the members of Thrive could participate in or what, I'm not sure. But, you know, overall, I think that the letter definitely bullet points some of the issues that is brought up about thrive. And I think that you know, just kind of stopping down and slowing down and, you know, making sure that everyone understands everything, you know, is what, you know, a goal would be of mine to kind of learn more about.
Mr. President, can I can I say something?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay, Councilor Roback, I greatly appreciate your comments. And that is why I know there's, you know, we've had a lot of discussions on all these topics, but that's why the plan is that we will have a forum on the housing elements of the general plan. And I did want to say at this point that I spoke with the chair of the planning board this week, and he indicated that it's to me that it's unlikely that the document is going to be ready in December. So we do. So we do have time because as I've been saying again and again, it's so important that we arm ourselves with the tools to have a meaningful discussion and meaningful impact. And it's really our responsibility, as Summerset elected officials, to provide as much information as possible to our constituents so they can make meaningful comments when that draft comes out. And I know that's something that's been a priority of council member Kumar. And this will put us way ahead of the game because a lot of the time when you read comments from citizens, they're not, they're sometimes they're not based on adequate information. And I want to make sure that the comments that our residents make are they're well armed, so that they're effective comments. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the additional update there. Councilmember Heller? If if you're available to give us some of your comments or thoughts?
Yes, sorry, I was muted. Um, I want to say that it was really Kabir who did the heavy lifting on this. Yes, we consulted back and forth, but he's the guy who wrote it. So thanks goes to him. And thank you for always. And thanks, thank you, Kabir, for making the changes that were most important to me. So I appreciate that. And I want to just tag on to what Shannon was talking about in terms of, you know, what is there, what's going on there in the community with housing? And it's really, if the planning board has not done any kind of study as to what the density is, you know, that's being planned, that some we're watching some of it before our eyes being built, if they haven't done that, then that is really derelict. Because I don't know how we can move, move on. It has to be part of the plan to understand the housing, the the schools, the, you know, the transportation, all the stuff that I think many people are crying out for. I know I hear that a lot at the other meetings I go to. And so I think this is really on the planning board, and we have to hold them to the fire. Well, let me hold them to it. But other than that, I'm good with this. So thanks.
Thank you. And thank you for your extra support working with Kabir. I agree with you. Kabir's been quite has been passionate and dedicated a lot of time to work on this. Robin, Councilmember Barr?
Yeah. Thank you particularly Kabir and Debbie for putting the whole thing together. And I think we've got to remember that this letter is about the thrive general plan itself and not about the housing document, which is what Jeffrey was saying earlier on. And so a lot of the feeling about that attainable housing plan is coming from a draft. And we should wait to see what the final one is. I don't think it'll be a lot better, frankly, but we should wait to see what the final one is. In terms of this letter, I think the issue is, how can we most catch the council's eye? So they can make changes that while retaining most of thrive, make changes that make it better, particularly for the local community here and for other local communities around. And I think that's what I was trying to say on Monday night. And I think it's a large descent. It's in there now. It could be sharper. Yeah. But that is to say, there are particulars around our area, Frenchip Heights, obviously that way, that that make it different from other areas. And therefore broadly, thrive should recommend should recognize that local differences exist and accommodate that in the attainable housing chapter. So that's really what the message should be.
You're muted, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilor Barr. I think that makes good sense. We have a packed agenda tonight. So unless there are any further comments from anyone, I recommend that I believe we can go ahead and vote whether or not we wish to sign this letter as is.
I had one question. I had one question. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's great. Thank you, Matt.
Councilmember Heller had also worked on a survey to go out in the town announcements.
You didn't mean a survey. You mean a petition.
I'm sorry, a petition to go out potentially in town announcements. I don't know if folks had had an opportunity to to look at that either.
Maybe Councilmember Heller wants to explain.
Yeah, it was really very simple. It was really a very simple. There's nothing confusing about this. It was just asking our residents to sign a petition to go to the council on the planning board, saying that we would like you to bring this bring us bring us and other communities to the table to to plan to to have our input into thrive. That's all. It says you didn't do it earlier, and now it's time to do it. So I think we send it out to the I was hoping we could send it out to the residents. They sign it and we send it along.
Well, that can be part of the that can be part of the motion.
Okay. Do you want me to make a motion?
Are you prepared to make a motion? Is Councilmember Kumar going to make the motion? Or is Councilmember Heller going to make the motion? That's the letter.
The letter will be Councilmember Kumar.
I will probably need help on this motion. I guess, is it as simple as motion to approve signing joint letter on Thrive 2050 to the from the Somerset Town Council to the Montgomery County Council?
Yeah. Okay, is is there? Do you want to add?
And and yeah, and and.
I mean, a petition would be attached.
Attaching petition sign distributed and subsequently signed by town residents requesting greater participation in the decision making process, if I heard Debbie correctly.
Okay, good. Is there a second on that?
A second.
Okay, second. Okay. Is there any discussion? The only thing I would like to say is that I know that that Matt will do an excellent job with with the petition. So we'll figure it out.
Got it.
I think we need to have it.
Go ahead. Mr. President, what were you saying?
I was gonna say, I think it's important for us to have a time limit on this petition so that we don't just keep holding off on our letter until we.
You know, we'll send, you know, we'll send the letter. We'll send the letter and then we'll send the petition as we get as we get.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying that.
It's an administrative thing. You don't need to work. We'll work it.
Thank you. Okay. And I think we're ready to vote.
Is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, excellent. So before I turn it over to the council president for the work session, I do note that the 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 hearing, the listing session on Thrive by the county council, I believe, is on November 30th. And I signed up to testify that I'm going to pass on my slot to Councilmember Kumar. So he can testify that night. Okay. And with that, I will turn it over to the council president for the work session. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and town manager, Matt Challenger. Thank you. So now we're going into our closed or regular work session. The first item is first items are administrative. And we're already behind the schedule, schedule a briefing on ARPA. So it's just if folks can pull out their calendars so we can schedule a meeting in the next week or two. Matt, can you provide some details on on what this meeting will be? What the content of the subject will be?
Yeah, so I think the idea was to just get a update on where we stand on in terms of the money that we've received, the money that we're planning to receive, and a general gist of what are the acceptable uses of ARPA money? So that then we can have more substantive discussions amongst the council on.
This is a briefing. This is a briefing just for the council on the law. And also that night to decide on when the public forum or forums will be.
Right. So this would just be a one hour time block. We might not even need all of that hour.
Correct.
I propose that we move, yes?
I was going to present a date, but go ahead, Steve.
I was just gonna say perhaps next Monday, even though it's Thanksgiving week, if it's before the holidays really kick in.
I was gonna say that unfortunately, I cannot at all next week.
I and actually, it might work out because myself, Phil Young, and possibly council members Barr and or Kumar are going to sit in on a presentation from the Maryland Municipal League about revenue loss for small municipalities next Tuesday. So that should be a nice update for us and probably some useful information for Somerset.
Time after that would be a good idea, but not too long after, because we've forgotten everything by then.
What about Monday to 29?
Unfortunately, I cannot do that. How about December 1? Wednesday, December 1?
That works for me.
It works for me. Could we do like an earlier time, like?
I was gonna say that. 5:30?
5:30 to 6:30?
Yeah. Okay.
30 is okay.
Shannon, does I?
Is that okay with everyone? 5:30 to 6:30 on Wednesday, December 1st?
Yeah, I can do it.
Right.
5:15?
5:30 to 6:30. December 1.
And and Matt will send the Zoom link tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you all. Next item is confirming committee terms for placement on the December council meeting agenda.
I'll just quickly say that I sent over a a spreadsheet that went over all of the committee members. Reverse engineered and updated the terms for people. So this is really a tool for the mayor to present at the next council meeting for and or and or possibly January to fill empty seats to renominate people whose terms are up and.
We've been promising for six months that we would send over what term people were in. So remember, the idea is that each committee and remember, there's no term limits in any of this. So each committee, a third will come up each year. It'll be staggered. So so this item for tonight is just to, as part of the process for the council to know that we're going to put this on the agenda for December, unless anybody objects. And I don't know why they would.
The only thing I'm gonna add up, sorry, is I believe I still am the liaison to the traffic committee. It just hasn't had a meeting in about 18 months.
That's not what this is about.
Yeah, I know, but that it's just to say fix that on the spreadsheet.
Well, that that okay, well, we will fix it.
Jeffrey and Matt, Mayor Slaven, and Matt, could you just repeat again what we will get at the next council meeting on this front? We will get this spreadsheet that shows who are the members.
Approving the terms that the people are in because they, when they were all confirmed for committees, they weren't put in a term at the time.
Got it.
It's all it is.
Excellent.
It's nothing very commercial.
Great. And as a quick aside, should we be considering term limits across the board? Should that be?
That's for another work session.
Steve, on your on your to do list?
Yeah, so I think that is an excellent topic, but for another work session, separate from this committee terms question.
Can I ask one question about the sheet? Under under environment, it's got an asterisk. And nobody else has an asterisk.
Sorry, thank you for pointing that out. That that was just, that was an editing error for my, I was making a note for myself and didn't didn't delete that.
Okay, great.
All right. Thank you.
Good eyeballing, Debbie.
It was bothering me.
Okay, so this will be on the agenda for us to look at and discuss as a non consent item. Is my understanding and in December. Okay, legislative considerations. We have a little bit of time. This is an important topic, clarifying rules for decks, balconies, and setback encroachments. This has been a, this is, this is a topic that I have noticed has been an issue in a number of building permit applications ever since I've been a council member here. And we have an opportunity to clarify the rules that are currently embedded in our town code to hopefully minimize confusion or uncertainty on the part of residents or architects. Our town attorney provided, I believe, two options to start the discussion on sort of paths we could take in terms of decks, balconies. One is just sort of would be a Somerset approach that seems sort of perhaps commonsensical. But and the other would be to bring us slightly different approach, might have a similar impact that would bring us in alignment with neighboring jurisdictions. If I can, if I can go in in sort of reverse order and see if folks have thoughts or comments on the our town council's proposals. Councilmember Barr?
The two versions seem to be sledgehammer versus scalpel by the look of it. I mean, perhaps that was the intention. The one amendment, if I'm reading it correctly, removes all exceptions for all pertinencies, you know, porches, balconies, decks, et cetera, so that everything has to operate within the setbacks. Yes. The other version is a scalpel. In other words, it's going in towards to decks and saying, we had a real problem with decks, and so let's fix decks. And 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 the way it fixes it is as decks belong in the rear only. And if you put decks in the rear, that's going to take away the problem that we had. And it does take away the problem that we had. But so that but those are the alternative approaches. You do a big work job that changes things a lot. Believe me, if we did remove all the extras on balconies, they exclude, then we would have a much simpler time approving permits. But we might also reduce the volume of homes that were built in the town. The scalpel approach takes us out of this particular situation. We still are dealing with lots of other exceptions to the setback.
That is a great description. Thank you for sort of illuminating it, Robin. That, that is a great description. Thank you for sort of illuminating it, Robin. Which is your preference?
My heart goes with the sledgehammer. My head goes with the scalpel.
Okay, heart and head, what a politician. Okay, um, can we mix it up a bit? Go over to Councilmember Heller?
I am. You know, I was a little confused by it, but I like the sledgehammer because I wanted to be clear. I'm having a hard time every time we have any of these issues. I like clarity. I, I love the idea of decks in the back. But what I wondered about that is some people build out their porches. They look a little like decks, you know, in the front, but I don't know. I, I find this whole thing very confusing. So I want a question, though, to clarify. When we say a porch is a covered, you know, like entrance way, I think I have a porch on my backyard that's screened in. What's that? Is that a deck with a screen? Is that what it is?
Well, no, yeah, so it's a, a good question. And after I had submitted these, I thought of a similar issue. And, and thought we might need to clarify the definition of porch as well and say that it's, you know, a first, a first, first floor entry at the front of the house because that's really what the exception was, was meant for. And similar to President Serko's comments, we've also had situations I'm reminded of now where, you know, things in the rear yard were deemed porches at the county level. But it may not really be porches from a ordinary person's perspective.
You know, I guess like when I thought about this, I did think about it in terms of my own, my own structure. And I guess I could call it a deck that's screened in, but I think we just, we should say porches are screened in. And, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. I interrupted you.
No, no.
The county definition is of a porch is a raised structure, you know, so it can't be at grade, which is one distinguishing factor.
Well, whatever we do, I would just like it to be very clear. And I, I don't, I don't want to have to dittle with, you know, whatever, because it's too hard and then it becomes easy to, you know, lean one way when we, you know, instead of another way. And I don't want to, I don't want to be in that position. That's my thoughts. So sledgehammer.
Councilmember Rovac?
Um, I was just gonna say, is, is a porch different because it has a roof? Does it, I don't know?
Well, different in, how do you mean different?
Like, isn't, isn't a porch different from a deck, like in this, because it has like a roof and it's like an enclosed? Or not necessarily enclosed, but it has like a roof on it, whereas a deck does not have a roof on it.
That's right, yeah. And, and the porch is, is generally, you know, only slightly raised off the grade. And so it's, you know, a, a front, a first floor entryway, whereas it, you know, a deck you might think of on the, the second level in the rear.
Yeah.
You might think of something that's part of the structure on a upper level. Interestingly, the, the county defines balcony as, you know, a platform that projects, whereas, you know, decks are typically simple structures attached to a house, you know, rather than being incorporated into the assembly of the wall, being incorporated into the assembly of the wall usually means the the item has more visible bulk and mass, which, you know, could explain why we've differentiated balcony and deck for purposes of the exemption. Yeah, porch is definitely different than, than a deck.
Okay, I mean, I feel like, I feel like we, I mean, I guess, I don't know if this is a sledgehammer, but I would be okay with not allowing any balconies or any decks on the front of a house. I don't know if Steve's talking, but he's muted.
I'm muted. Thank you very much. This has also reminded me. Yes. We're we're, we're not trying to constrain people's ability to design their house in a certain way. We're just constraining their ability to project into the established setbacks.
So I, I would say that we shouldn't allow for setbacks on raised front of houses.
Right. Right, just to understand what you're saying, we, we should not allow
exceptions to setbacks.
Exceptions to the setbacks. We shouldn't allow people to build into the setbacks.
In, in the front.
As a general rule.
I believe Councilmember Rovac says in the front, which would be, you know, a third option we could do. We could allow exemptions in the side and rear, but not any in the front.
Yeah, I, I mean, in the front, yes.
Okay. I think time for, I'd like to hear from Councilmember Kumar.
Well, I appreciate Steve, your comment that this is something that we've been experiencing for a while, that there's been a gap in our code on this issue, and it's led to, as Debbie noted, a degree of precision in our deliberations. And as a result, that's damaging for our residents and kind of decisions that we take. So we, we need to act on this. It's long overdue. So I appreciate that. I think that the, what Councilmember Barr or Robin called the scalpel approach, I think that's option one. The problem with that, as this discussion has shown, is that the, you know, we never, ever complete the operation and the patient just continues to bleed on the operating table. I mean, we just keep deliberating and scalping away, and we never close it out. And so I, I lean in the direction of clarity, simplicity. I lean in that direction. I'm not sure what we have right now on option two is indeed the, the final word on that. And, but I lean in that direction. And I appreciate what Shannon was saying. That seemed like a interesting potential new scenario for us to consider, which has, again, simplicity, but, you know, creates a bit more room for architectural liberties that our residents might want to take. I think the one thing that could be helpful, I don't know if Ron is up for doing this, is, or, or Matt, is if we take, let's take the option two and apply it to a series of recent applications. I would love to kind of analyze the impact of if that code language existed, what could have been the outcome of those decisions? And that might give us some sort of grounded understanding of, you know, the real power of, of this kind of code update. So.
Sure, yeah, I, I can't talk in specifics on prior applications right now, but I can say briefly that, you know, generally, the reason exceptions are allowed for projections is because it promotes compatible development. It promotes projections that break up the visual mass of structures. And a risk in going with option two is that, you know, if someone just wants to maximize the buildable envelope, they could build their house right up to the setbacks and you end with, you end up with square and rectangular structures and facades, you know. On the other hand, that hasn't happened in Chimi Chase Village and Section Three of the village where that approach is taken by those jurisdictions. And, you know, those jurisdictions have felt like, you know, similar to what Councilmember Heller said. They just want a clear rule. Here's the setback, and, you know, you can build whatever you want within it. And we're not going to get into the business of trying to figure out what your particular item may or may not be, especially given that contemporary construction sometimes can render that difficult because, you know, the what was traditionally a porch or, or deck fifty years ago, you know, might be different today.
Steve, a follow-up on that, just very, very brief, quick follow-up. I mean, it could be useful to have a bit more analysis on, on that, Ron. If other members are interested, and that could be, we could consider that in the intervening, intervening weeks before the council meeting, Steve. I think we need a bit more data on, on, on potential impact that could help us think through it, like specific cases that have happened in, in recent months, years, whatever, that could help us understand.
I think it's a more, so I, I think it's, it's a great question, you know, how would this have impacted things in the past? I suspect it's going to be harder to pull out than, than we might think because houses that built in accordance with the code, the way it was written, did not need a variance to have a ten-foot wide bay window stick three feet into the setback, on the side setback. So we, we'd have to dig into every single building permit to see where it would be. We wouldn't just, it'd be more than just looking for variances that were requested and given. And I, I think, but it's still, it's, it's, it's a discrete number of building permits. I don't know, ten to twenty per year, we could look at a couple of years' worth. I think it'd be an interesting exercise.
I, I would.
Yes?
Yeah. Sorry, I interrupted. Go ahead.
Aren't we on like kind of a time crunch though with this?
Yeah, so, so I, I think we've been sort of somewhat avoiding a contentious issue that's been just manifesting itself over and over again in different ways with different types of exceptions and variances and protrusions into setbacks for years now. My personal preference would be to, I guess, more the sledgehammer approach and just introduce legislation that would mirror or be very similar to our neighboring jurisdictions. Because Chiva Chase Number Three in the village and then we still have an opportunity to discuss and modify and debate it. We can look at some of this data. But there's a long timeline between an introduction, getting something assigned and in place. And I guess I'm somewhat anxious to get that started at our next regular meeting.
I agree, I agree with that. I, I was gonna say, we could introduce it and still seek this data between introduction and adoption.
Okay. Thank you.
The only thing I was thinking, it'd be something of Shannon's idea, which is to allow the exceptions in the rear, which is more private than the area around the sides in the front. And so, in other words, no exceptions to the setback on three sides, but allow exceptions to setback on the rear would be where we would go. I don't know where, what people feel about that.
Can I say something?
Yes, absolutely.
What I worry about with the rear now, these days, is that our houses that are being built are ginormous, okay? And so if we give exceptions to the back, often you just, you know, putting somebody closer to your, your windows. You know, I, I have a case in point, in my, in the people behind me, you know, and it's because their house is so close. It's really at the very edge of, of, of what they're allowed to build on. And then they've got a balcony and they can look right into my house if they'd like. It's just weird. So I, I, I don't know if we would struggle over that, you know, but yet I like the idea of balconies in the back, decks in the back. I like that idea. But I think we got to be careful about the setback stuff.
But if we were to have like the balconies or the decks in the back, I mean, they still have to follow whatever the setback guidelines are, right?
Well, we, we have guidelines that allow so many feet for a balcony, so many feet for a deck beyond the setback. So that is they trued into more of the yard. That's at the moment true all around the house. What I'm saying here is tipping up on your idea is maybe we could allow it at the back only. So the deck would extend outwards and the balcony would extend outwards and the porch would extend outwards beyond the setback. The rest of the house wouldn't. And that's, you know, Debbie's saying that gets them too close. That's, that's the point.
But is that a blanket thing that you can't, if I wanted to put a balcony in the back of my house, am I allowed a certain number of feet? You know, or?
Well, I mean, we, we could write, I mean, again, we could write it in so that, you know, you can go beyond the setback, but there must be a minimum of X feet to the, the back of the yard anyway, regardless, you know, we can do that.
I'd be okay with that.
Okay, great discussion. And we, we've actually covered this very thoroughly. So I, I think we're in a position to consider things and, and take it the next step further. So I think that I'm hearing general consensus or support to, for us to introduce the second option, similar to our neighbors. And we'll just introduce it as is, or in the language to, to make it fit with our town code. And then we will probably consider favorably, or at least be, be looking forward to a discussion on like some modifications for the rear setback, but I, I think it, it, it sounds like we're ready to move forward. And I appreciate the support. Is that, okay, good. Hearing, hearing nothing else? Sorry, my other computer just, I use two computers here and it just froze on me. So let me move to the next agenda item.
So, Council President Serko, did you want to go ahead and introduce the draft tonight so we could start the legislative process? You could have a motion.
I didn't realize we could do that in this meeting.
Can we do it?
Yes.
You know, it's a motion to put it on the agenda to be introduced, right?
Well, you could, you could introduce it tonight as well if you wished.
This isn't, this is a work session, though.
That's okay, in my opinion.
Okay, um.
It's, we're, we're doing work and then.
Town attorney, whatever you say.
Well, we, but would, normally wouldn't residents comment and when we introduce?
We'll have a public hearing.
Not, not on introduction.
Not an introduction, okay.
So the introduction introduces it to the public for public consumption, and then the council can decide at least six days and no more than sixty days later when the hearing would be.
I mean, it is, it is a substantial change. We should probably do at least sixty days to.
So you're saying, Mr. Town Attorney, that at a work session, the council does have the power to introduce legislation, is that right?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Ron, and we, we will be able to get some impact analysis along the lines that we were discussing earlier. Are you, are you and Matt in a position to give us some of that information? On, on the top of your mind, is that realistic?
I can, I can work with Doug. And I think we could at least get, you know, a sampling of, of some recent or historical projects that, I mean, it's simple, and I mean, especially since this is simplifying the code, so it's, it's easier to kind of draw a square of where the setbacks are and to say.
Yeah, exactly.
Exactly.
How, how many houses were built at the permissible building lines and how many relied on the exceptions for balconies, porches, decks, et cetera, you know, looking at a handful or however many is feasible?
I think to Robin's point, it's substantive, important, long-needed, but substantive. I think this kind of analysis will be appreciated by the residents.
Okay, um, great, well, I'm, I'm excited to move forward and I'm ready to introduce this on, in the understanding that we'll have a, a public hearing on it at our December meeting. And if need be, we can have another public meeting in January to inform our, our vote.
So, so wait, wait a minute here. So you're, you're saying there should be a let's talk about the process when we have our leadership meeting.
Okay. But, but for starters, we can introduce it tonight. Do we need to take a, and do we need to take a formal vote for the, to introduce it? I assume we do.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I, I might need some help to, to get this correct, but I move that we introduce a, a change in our building code to re, to reduce or eliminate exceptions to setback requirements for building permits. For building permits. Similar to that imposed by neighboring jurisdictions and we can specify those. That's it.
Yeah, so, yeah, just, you could add. Being ordinance number eleven twenty one dash two. Which is item four point two in the meeting package, since we had the two drafts.
Right, okay, thank you, so so moved.
It's a chapter in building construction which maybe should be and just verbally give it that.
Uh, I can second. Should we, should we? Take a vote, discussion?
Or any discussion, any further discussion before, and this is just to introduce, we will have opportunities to. Discuss the merits.
Steve, on. On process, very quickly, we introduce it, but then I think at a next. Working session or at some point, we need to decide. When we will schedule for its adoption. And so I don't think we can presume that it will be at the the December meeting, I think we will need to have, yeah.
The December meeting, I believe, would just be.
It wouldn't even be on.
The agenda, yeah, we are introducing it today, then in the next work session, we huddle to decide when we will adopt it.
Okay, I see what you're saying, yes, so not in December, yeah, agenda, yeah.
This is just to get the ball rolling right now.
Yeah, I mean, just 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 before we vote on it, I I want to read. What we're changing, it's only a few lines. Steps, stoops, decks, terraces, porches, bay windows, oriel entrances, vestibules, balconies, outside stairways, chimneys. And similar projections may not project into any required setback. Now, if you look at our current building code, all of these things can project into our setback, varying distance depending on the thing, so it is a major change. To our building code that we're proposing, I'm not, I'm, you know, I think it's a good change myself, I just want to make sure everybody understands that this is a major change.
Is there a way that we can do it that would change it for anything that? Rises above like the first story?
You you know, I would suggest that rather than go into all this tonight. That how you might want to amend it can be discussed at the work session.
Exactly, we introduce.
The only topic, the the idea now is to introduce it to get it out there and then. Because because I don't think you all really have enough information to decide tonight how to amend it.
Okay.
That would just be my suggestion, unless you want to be here all night.
I don't.
Okay.
Me neither, okay, so we have a motion that's been seconded, are we ready to take a vote? Or is that the mayor supposed to ask that?
Well, now, you can, okay, all of us in favor? Okay, it's introduced, but in order to expedite the flow of information. Matt will. Send it out again as soon as the town attorney does the final draft of it. Right, and then we will get it out there in 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 public. Cause now it's a public document. We will get it out there so we can get comments as soon as possible so that you will have the benefit of comments at the work session. And that's all I'm gonna say.
Okay. Great, thank you. Moving on to committee recommendations. And I want to say, Matt, thank you for the way you've clumped the work session items. Does make makes it easier to follow and tackle. Edits to the PNRC Charter. Can you? Describe that to us, I guess, Matt, or do we have the liaison to the PNRC?
Yeah, I'm I'm happy to, and I know that uh, Kristen Connor, the committee chair, has also joined us. And has said that she's made herself available to answer any questions that the council has. The the PNRC. Essentially, I I I actually had a meeting with Kristen myself and they've had a couple of subsequent meetings to. I think strengthen and clarify the Parks and Natural Resources Committee's goals to align with. The interests of the committee members as well as I think. Some of the things that they've more historically done and also finally to add. A um, a real role for the committee in terms of. The review and. Role in tree removals and tree planting and overall beautification and. Consideration of of park areas throughout the town, and so. I I gave you all. A basically a red line version of. The existing Parks and Natural Resources Committee document, which. You might recall also really was just based off of a template draft. Sort of with the intention that these are, these are working documents that. You know, are are living, breathing documents that the committee and council and mayor. Can have input into how they evolve over time. So some of some of the things, some of the things there. Basically, specifically enumerating that the committee. Offers guidance on and and recommendations on the town code with regards to tree removals. They they've set some goals of developing and maintaining a tree registry. And some of the steps that we need to do in order to stay a tree city and taking an active role in that process as well. And so that's sort of the high level, high level stuff there. And I can answer some questions, and as I said, Kristen is also here to answer any questions too.
Thanks, Matt, um, I want to say I personally am very much in favor. Of this update, and I especially like the connection to bicycle friendly, I'm a big bicyclist, I think that'd be great. I guess, just quick questions or comments of from any council members, Councilmember Heller?
My my only question is, does this in any way make the process more cumbersome? When our arborist is making decisions, you know, the tree is sick, take it down, whatever, put up a tree. I just don't want to make it more cumbersome for him.
Not, not this specifically. This is more. This is more broader level that. It enumerates that this committee takes an active role in developing the town code and offering recommendations to you as. To you, the council, on ways that the tree code can be strengthened or clarified.
But but I do think that that question should be posed to the. Arborist so that when the council votes on this, they're armed with that info.
Yeah, and and to that point, there's a second recommendation from the committee. Related specifically to the tree code, and that might be. That might warrant especially a feedback from Tolbert to to make sure that we have kind of a. A a good process for that.
But right now, you're, right now, you're, the topic is the amendments to the charter. Not not a different recommendation, right? So, so so remember, the idea is that the committee has made a recommendation. Regarding amending their charter. So tonight, the council is to decide what to do with that recommendation, whether to. Accept it and move it forward to the agenda, whether to. To let it die here or whether they want to ask any. Further information from the committee or the staff. Before they decide what to do with it.
Yeah, and I'd just a question really, which is. Is PNRC's role in our parks limited to? Tree removals and recommendations for trees planting, or is it a broader role in landscaping in the parks, that's the question.
Um, I don't know if that's a rhetorical question for the council to consider, um, the way that.
That's a question for, that's for the, that is the council's prerogative. So I think that his question is to the other council members, right, Councilmember Barr?
Well, I'll certainly ask it that way, sure.
You know, Steve and and Robin and and Matt, just a quick background note. I I think, Matt, you said this, this is the PNRC, as you know, was sort of not fully operational for a while. I think they have sort of started coming together, they've already made one recommendation, they're working to make another recommendation. And what this is, is if you look at the document in the packet. Them being sort of more specific about their. Goals and objectives than the generic language of the original charter, so all this does, it makes it more specific, focus on trees, focus on. Bike friendliness, etc. So a as a sort of background note, it's worth keeping in mind, that's generally a good step. To to, you know, kind of define more more clearly what what the goal is, so I just want all of you to keep that in mind, I think it, so the first question is, are we comfortable with that? General direction, and the second question is, are there any specific things that they are mentioning in terms of their updated charter? That we need to revise or we would recommend, is that right, Matt?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if I if I can add on one, one small note that. Helps maybe answer kickoff a discussion on on Robin's question. One of the things that they talk about there is is making recommendations for beautification and landscaping of town entrances. So I I think that was a specific area where the committee felt like they could. They could have a hand in that and and help improve that.
Yeah, I mean, but well, there's more to my question, let me just just fill in the background, I mean. Trees are part of the landscape, you know, that's. Not shocking news to anybody, I hope. But. Trees live longer. When they are with other trees. And also when there is open land around them so that they can get more water into them. Than if there's grass up to their edges, which which restricts the water flow to them. So there there is a relationship between trees and the landscape that affects the lives of trees. So when when we got a committee that is interested in our parks, then it does make sense to give them recommendations on the landscape as a whole. Because the landscape as a whole influences the life of trees, and that's that's why I'm I'm breaking it up.
Thank you all, Councilmember Rovak, do you have some questions or thoughts?
No.
Okay, so I'm. I I'm happy this is it, this as is. My only minor word tweak would be that. I would hope the PNRC would have more than just budget recommendations for a kid appropriate nature park, that they would have recommendations on. What should be in the park, how to maintain the park and what people could do in the park, but. But I think we can move along with this and and as needed in a year or so or two years. We can always update the charter and refocus it as necessary.
And also remember, it doesn't limit. Make the recommendation even if it's not in the charter.
Yeah, thank you.
Just helps to find. For people that want to be on the committee, be part of what the work is.
I I could, I could, um, I could just. Change it to provide recommendations for and just basically strike the word budget.
That'd be my idea, but but I didn't want to get into a lot of word sniffing here.
But you'll be able, remember, tonight, you're just deciding whether where where to go with this recommendation and you'll, you still have time. To amend the recommendation.
Right, well. So so I think that the idea is we would introduce this at the December council meeting. As a non consent item, so the town residents have an opportunity to discuss and comment on it. Is is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. It could be, it could be on the non consent agenda and there'll be a hearing.
Or it could be on the consent agenda.
Or it could be on the consent agenda too, I guess. Is that what you're thinking, Kabir?
Yeah, that would be my recommendation.
Okay.
RC on it, though, I mean, let's make it the non consent agenda, so that. They can offer their take on what the charter means.
Yeah, I'm probably, I I think probably it would be better to be on the non consent agenda, because I don't think it's unanimous. And this also will give the opportunity for more public.
Right.
And remember, everyone, even if we, even if the president and I put it on the consent agenda, anybody can take it off the consent agenda the night of the meeting.
Thank you. Some wild cats in the room. Okay, great, so we're set with the PNRC Charter, the next item is edits the Communications Committee Charter. Matt, can you lead us along here?
Yeah, you know what, and in fact, I I I. I, this was a anticipatory agenda item, um, and I I don't really have. I, the committee didn't really, didn't end end up getting to it, so, um. Yeah, we can, we can gloss over that one for now.
Is the committee functional?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Um, good, guess it's closer to being back on time, Black Lives Matter Resolution. Excited about this. I guess, Robin, you're our liaison to. Diversity Inclusion Committee, right, can you introduce this for us, please?
Sure, yeah, uh, this this one has been a long time coming. It was intended really to be on council agenda last year, but. Because of circumstances, it didn't appear on the agenda. So. A lot more work has been done on it since then, and I'm gonna recognize Kumar Vazwani, who did a lot of work behind this. And. The Equity and Inclusion Committee then edited down Kumar's longer statement to produce the resolution as you see it. It is, if you read it through, it 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 does show a little bit of the history of our town. And our discriminatory history, in fact. While recognizing at the same time the current events that happened, George Floyd's murder is mentioned, for example. And also the origins of the Equity and Inclusion Committee and what happened there are mentioned. And that's, that's the guts of it. With that, Kumar isn't himself totally satisfied, he would like more in the resolution, and you should know that, but the resolution as it stands is the. Unanimous recognition of the Equity and Inclusion Committee.
And remember, tonight, you're deciding whether to move this forward, which would give the opportunity for anyone. To comment before you make. Take, make a decision on it, and I and I do think it is ready to go to the council.
Yeah, I I I absolutely recommend that it go to council, yeah.
And in addition to that, the, so let's say. For example, if a resolution is passed that is not satisfactory to a number. Of residents, the committee could. Recommend of an an addendum to the resolution.
Right.
Because we can't expect all letters or all resolutions to have the kitchen sink and. We just have, but we just have to start somewhere. And so I think that. I and I I think I'm glad it's taken a long time. But but I'm glad we've gotten to this point, and I hope the council will agree to put this on the agenda for December.
And I am recommending that it be put on the agenda.
Um, thank you, Robin, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for some of the background there. Councilmember Rovak, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I mean, if we're just gonna push it forward. Tonight, then I think that that is good, um, you know, I thought that Kumar's. Put some great things that are more actionable items that we could do, like we could. You know, pressure the US Senate to pass the George Floyd. put some great things that are more actionable items that we could do, like we could, you know, pressure the US Senate to pass the George Floyd Justice and Policing Act. And, you know, we can look at our own hiring practices, and I thought that some of those points were a little bit more relevant, as like, far as things that we can move forward with that are actionable. But, you know, I'm certainly happy to pass this along to the next step.
And, and I do think that we should put this in, put the draft in the journal. The deadline is in, there's time, we have time. I forgot to bring that up earlier regarding the, the draft of the introduction.
All right, I guess I, I will do that then. Yeah, I think you just got volunteered, Robin. Yeah, I, Shannon, I think that's an excellent comment, really valid one, that this is just a resolution that we're considering. And
I mean, I will say
Do not be perceived as the, the end of the discussion or this, or negating the need for actions. I think that some of the actions that Kumar raised and you discussed make great sense, and we can also do in parallel with this letter.
Yeah, Equity and Inclusion Committee is working on some of these things, in fact.
Great, thank you.
One thing I want to say as a follow-up to our orientation is that I, this is another example of where our council can get involved in a national issue that and these national issues only get, are only successful when they get disseminated and approved at the local level. It's the same way that we're, I, I love the way that, that this council is so engaged and thrive, which is a level above us, and there are also issues at the state level that I hope in the future, this council will get involved in, because those decision makers really look at, to the local level for, for input. So, so I, I love the fact that, that this is bubbling up a little bit.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Councilmember Heller?
No, I think I think everybody said everything. I love the idea of putting it in the town journal, though, the draft.
Right.
Great idea.
Uh, Councilmember Kumar?
Fine with moving it forward, but appreciate Shannon's comment that there are more specific things we can do under the broader framework of what's been expressed here. I would add one thing to that, which is we need to update our history. Publicized history of our town. I recommend all of you flipping through our, I don't keep it by me in council meetings. The history of our town.
Well, actually.
And I think there's a, you know, it's very noticeable absence.
The History and Archives Committee is considering, I don't want to take anything away from Councilor Barr, but the History and Archives Committee has that idea on their plate about updating that, that
I think it's long overdue.
It was written
Long overdue, appreciate that.
Years ago.
Yeah, but I support moving it forward.
There's also a history and archives ideal of having a piece of our website that is on the history of the town, which can then be updated regularly as opposed to a book, which obviously is slower.
Great, and, and great discussion, and I, I hear full consensus on putting this on the non-consent agenda for December meeting for us to vote on with public input. With us correct, okay. Next item, pool committee recommendations. This is really just to start the discussion, because the pool committee has made a number of recommendations. And there are also some pool issues, might be the right word, for us to discuss now and in upcoming work sessions. But in particular, one of the pool committee's recommendations was that the pool season for the next year should go from April 1st to the end of November. That would be a significant increase of the pool season. Impact the town budget roughly requiring an additional $25,000 per month that the pool is open. And, and really what I was just hoping for here was a chance for council members, or an opportunity for council members to share some of their thoughts or concerns on this proposal, and perhaps what are the steps we should take to in, in, in my opinion, we, we, we need to get a better sense of what the, the town really wants in this area for such a substantial outlay of public resources. So I guess we'll flip around the order again, and since I see Robin there, Ron, what are your thoughts?
Sure, yeah, I, the request is to put money in the budget for next year to extend the pool season. And actually, because of the way our budget works, the first part of the money would be this year's money. And therefore, we'd have to have a separate resolution for that. And the second half of the money would be next year's money, and that could, would then be a budget request. With that detail around there, I, I would like to know, as you just said, how much support there is in the town for this beyond the swim, the pool committee itself. The weather, obviously, in November, as we're experiencing, is not going to attract many people to the pool deck. And unless the pool is covered, there is a separate request that is part of the recommendations for an all-year-round community facility, and that request I'd like to see also considered, but I do want to hear how broad the town support is for opening it this widely.
Thank you, Robin. How about Councilmember Heller, our liaison?
Yeah. Yeah, I've been, I've really been a part of this discussion, and I, one of the things I did after the last pool committee meeting was I started a chart on this month's weather. And when the sun was, when, when the sunset, you know, so we'd have a, we were able to have a picture of what's the weather in November. Now, it can't, I can't say it's gonna be the same weather next year, but it's, it's a good, probably, you know, likelihood. And the other thing that I haven't been able to do, what I want to do is I would like to, I, I just, I'm just seeing this now, um, Matt, the, uh, you must have put this together, the pool extension, season extension, did you do that? There's, I just, I didn't notice it before tonight, you know, about, about all the costs, and you have a chart there, you must have done this.
Let's see, where are you?
It was the first thing on the Google Docs, and I just saw that now. Um, but I, what I, I can speak to it without reading the whole thing, is that I would like the, to have the ability to really analyze the pool usage from September and October. And I could, and, and if we're gonna talk about this more, I will do that, you know, I'll commit to going through member splash's data and really come out with, you know, like on, if we had 30 people on a Monday, how many of those were water aerobics people, that kind of thing, to go, to really drill down. And I, I think, I think we really need more data to make those decisions about April and, and, and November. Off the top of my head, I would say November would be really a waste of our money. And I, and I think we wouldn't, as, as a council, I don't think we're doing the right thing spending our money that way. I have to look at the weather in, in our, in April for this year and, and, and to, and see if I can make another recommendation. But fiscally, I think it's irresponsible to open the pool in November. But, um, you know, I'd rather we save our money, do a study like they'd like us to do, to figure out, should we winterize this pool? Should we have a year-round facility? And then, what is, what are the town, what do the people in town want? How do they want their money spent? Not just what I think or what we think, what, what, what do people want? So, um, you know, do we have to rob Peter to pay Paul to do this? I don't know. So anyway, I just think it needs more, more drilling down and figuring out the usage of the pool. That's what, that's really where I am. And I'll keep my chart going, but my chart shows November is a no-no, okay? So far.
Thank you for the maintaining the chart.
Anytime, anytime.
And thank you for your thoughts there. Councilmember Rovak, and we'll go to Kabir.
Um, so I agree with Debbie in terms of like the pool for November, and it could be, you know, a waste of resources and, and money. The one thing that I did have a question on, sorry, my dog is like howling in the background. Um, is I thought that in one of the exercises that we did where, um, sorry, um, that one of the exercises we did showed that the pool really costs closer to like $54,000 a month to run. And so I don't know what the difference is between this $25,000 and like the $54,000, and what is real and what is not real. Um, and so that is a question to me, because I'm not sure that the 25K allocated to open it is enough money that we need. And then um, and then the other question would be for, like, as Debbie's looking into the member splash, which I'm happy to help you with, is maybe looking into the main numbers as well. And, and seeing, because, you know, I think that my recollection and looking at just overall weather for April might, it might be too early as well, just because of the weather, and those are my thoughts.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Kumar?
You know, first of all, I have to say that I applaud the pool committee for submitting these recommendations ahead of time, because I think part of the challenge, at least last year, has been that we've received requests that felt, that gave us a little time for thoughtful deliberation, and so I appreciate, applaud. So maybe Mayor Slavin's guidance of pool committee chair has finally added up over all this time. So well, well done, Mayor Slavin on that front. I think the second thing I would say is that that, you know, I, I strongly believe that the pool is de facto community center. I've mentioned this before, I think the more we can do to sort of, you know, make the most of that space, you know, I think we'll go a long way. I think some of what has happened when we've extended the pool season was just not anticipated this past year, like what happened with the food trucks, for example, which was a nice way for people to come together. Now, in terms of the specific recommendations, I, I agree with Shannon that we will need, so first, Robin's observation and, and sort of guidance to us is very important. The April extension is something we have to consider for this fiscal year and would require a majority resolution if we want to go down that path. But we, we cannot do that without a clear understanding at a bare minimum of what it would cost, and I do not believe I'm confident that the figure that's been recommended is the correct figure. And so I think it will fall on Matt, you know, shoulders to, to give us the exact figure. What I had done, Shannon, that's what you're referring to, the 54K, was a high-level extrapolation. And I think what we are seeing here is based on the American pool recommendations for November this year that they gave. So, so neither of those figures are accurate, so we will need the exact figures for, for April, if, as a, at a bare minimum, if we were to consider that extension on, on the budget side. And then, I, I think I, I applaud both Shannon and Debbie taking on looking at member splash. I think we need all the data we can. I think now we have the time, frankly, to be able to be very, you know, sort of deliberate and look at this properly. And then lastly, I really like the idea, and I think there is, I think all of you are, I think, keen on this, is some systematic investigation on how to indeed convert the pool into an all-season community center. If we can take deliberate steps to figure that out, and so the pool committee has recommended this consultant, I think that's a great, could be a really good step forward. So those are my thoughts right now, but applaud the pool committee for getting us started early.
Mr. President, can I, can I say something?
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So thank you, Councilmember Kumar, for the, for the kudos. But, and actually, we, Councilmember Heller joined our briefing with the chair of the committee, and so one of the things that we urged him to do was to disseminate these ideas way in advance, so that when so that when you make a decision on whether you're gonna open the pool early, which is in this year's budget, you'll be armed with information as to how many people are interested. So everyone should talk this up for the next several months, because the council won't even need to make that decision about whether you want to transfer money to open the pool early until next year. So this is, I think the president just wanted to have the beginnings of this discussion to give an opportunity so there'll be many opportunities for residents to weigh in on this.
Right, and I very much want to hear from residents who are interested in having the pool open in April and November.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate all the thoughtful comments, and, Mr. Mayor, some of the perspectives there on the timeline. Exactly, so I was not looking for any decision or even anything to bring forward to the December meeting. I just want to start the dialogue. We've received a recommendation from one of our committees. It is a well-thought-out recommendation, and it warrants our careful consideration, but we do have time to work on it. I heard a number of the council members talk about the need to, to get more two things that are related, you know, both with regards to data, we need to get of, better understand the potential costs of these recommendations. And we need to better understand what are the desires or interests of town residents. So I'll take the action to work with the mayor and the town manager to explore ways to, I don't know, have a town survey or something to solicit inputs, and we'll follow up with further discussions at our work session in December. So thank you all very much. That brings us to the next item, making pretty good progress here, the PNRC's tree removal proposal. And I'd like to go first to Councilmember Heller, because I think that some of your thoughts, Debbie, on the charter pertain equally to, or perhaps more pointedly to, the tree removal proposal. So I don't know if you have any thoughts, comments to share here?
No. I don't know why I, I have, I have totally missed that. I thought I read everything, and I don't, I, I don't know, I have no opinion. But maybe I'll get one as we go on.
Debbie and Steve and Matt, would it be possible to hear from PNRC members on, on this?
That's just, I was gonna
Okay, great.
Thank you, Kabir.
Yeah.
That's a great suggestion. By chance, is Kristen Connor still available, the, the chair of the PNRC? Or if not?
I'm still on.
Oh, good. You're a big K, looks good. Um, could you give us a, a brief summary of, of the change and why you're recommending it?
Sure, um, sorry, I have a lot going on in the background, so apologies for. Sure. Um, sorry, I have a lot going on in the background, so apologies for, for that. Um, so the, um, the goal for the changes that we've proposed to the town code are really to, um, to simplify the process, we hope. And to make much more clear when, uh, when trees can be removed and more importantly, what's expected of residents when they want to remove a tree. Um, or a series of trees. So right now there is the distinction between if you're removing one or two trees. That's a decision that can be made by the mayor, um, and put under the advisement of the arborist. And three or more trees goes to the council. We, we would very much like to incorporate language that any time someone removes a tree, that, um, it is replaced and that there's a replanting plan for that purpose. But we also recognize that it's not always appropriate. For a while, we were advocating for, uh, a tree-for-a-tree language in the, in the code. And, um, we recognize that it's perhaps not always that simple. And so we've provided this list, um, Samra Masulam, who lives on Surrey, provided this list or summary of specific considerations to be made. But I think I could summarize it that, um, it would, we'd like it to be a general policy that every tree removal application be considered, you know, under these, these different criteria. And that without any extenuating circumstances, issuing a permit to remove a tree should be contingent on a replanting plan. And now who should make those decisions is something that we have talked about at some length. And we actually, I would say, feel that there is, um, it's perhaps not advised that it's the PNRC, but we also want to reduce the administrative burden to the council to have, have, um, these permit applications that come before the council that, that may not need to be and, and end up, you know, creating, uh, unnecessary administrative work for, for everyone. So, um, it is really something that I think we need to work on together to come up with what, what group or what body or what, um, participation beyond our arborist could consider the, um, whether a replanting plan is sufficient. And obviously, this is all set separate from any sort of construction-related permitting that the, that the council, I think by definition, would, would have to, uh, uh, would have to consider. So I don't know if I've done that justice, but it's a start and, um, and so I welcome any questions.
Let me add a little bit to, so that, I mean, this is, it's a change in the way trees are reviewed is really what this is about. Previously, we've been doing a kind of numbers, um, judgment, a number of trees, um, removed. And, um, if three trees removed, the whole council has to do it. One tree is removed only mayor, and a tree is a tree is a tree. What this is saying here is the quality of the trees matter. Um, and so in terms of aggravating factors that argue against granting the permission, it's the outstanding qualities of the tree to be removed, such as uniqueness, rarity, size, or status as a native canopy or landmark tree is determined by the town arborist. So it's the quality of the tree is the first criterion then when evaluating the permit. Another of the criteria is the number of trees removed in the last five years, which gets back to the sneaky way of taking a tree out every year to get around things. So, but the whole movement is then towards, um, evaluating the quality of the trees, um, as well as simply evaluating the, whether it's a tree being removed. On the other side of it, replanting, more serious considerations given to the size of the trees replanted, it's got to be at least two-inch diameter trunk. And also the owners are responsible for maintaining it over the first two years. They have to place it if it dies in the first two years. So it, there's just, that's how it's handled.
Mr. President, may I ask a question?
Yes, please, Mr. Mayor.
So, uh, just to give a little bit of a history, I think that, um, one of the reasons why this committee has been looking at this issue for a number of years, and, and the chair does a fantastic job, by the way, is because there's, there's a loophole, which I think we might have discussed during orientation. There's a loophole in the current law that allows someone to submit successive one-tree removals that people have taken advantage of, and we couldn't stop them. So I'm just wondering if that is addressed in this proposal? And maybe it is, because you were talking about one year, but what, what if they do it once a month?
The, the, um, criterion is the, as an aggravating factor, the number of trees removed from the subject lot within a five-year period is a potential aggravating factor, and that's, that's how it's handled.
But so then, but it's handled, but is there a way to close the loophole so that if someone takes down a tree once per month for three months, that somehow that decision would go to the council for review?
Well, yeah, I mean, at the moment, we, we've got to talk a little bit more about when, when application goes to council for review, but yes, it would go to council for review as it's written in the charter at the moment.
Jeffrey, you, uh, Mayor Slaven, you make a very important point. I think the purpose is to start this conversation. The purpose of this recommendation from the committee is to start this conversation to close the loophole. And so I think what could be useful is to take the substance, one possible next step, just take the substance of the recommendations of the question Ron. You know, to kind of give us updated language that is in the spirit of the recommendations that they're making.
It is the, but it's still the intent of the committee's recommendation to close the loophole.
Yes, I saw Kristen unmuted. I don't know if she wants to weigh in on that front.
It's absolutely our intent to close the loophole.
Oh, excellent.
There, there is one area of ambiguity, Kristen, and I emailed that back, you know, back and forth with you earlier this week. It's to do with when there's urgency in removing a tree, um, it's about to fall on someone's house, that kind of urgency. Um, and we don't want to wait on a council decision. And so the, you know, it's guidelines to develop to allow staff to make a quick decision when a quick decision needs to be made, to separate it from the council review that would generally be happening for tree removals. That's, that's really what's missing at the moment.
But I don't think anyone would, would disagree that that's an essential piece to, to, you know, for public safety, personal safety, that, that just as we do now, um, if a tree is, has fallen on a home or if there's an emergency, a tree, there is a mechanism for the tree to be, to be removed. It is actually our hope that in that setting, that the tree would be replaced and that by going through the permit process, this new permit process, that, that the tree would be replaced. But that comes back to the consideration of who would make those decisions as well. And I think that's the very tricky part of the question. The PNRC really isn't comfortable becoming the body that is making all of these assessments as to, whether a tree or, you know, creating this pro and con sort of situation for each tree, which becomes very subjective. So that's, that's where we also stop short, I think, of making a, a more comprehensive recommendation about, um, anyone else making those decisions.
Right. Well, well, I think that's, that's why we have our town attorney to craft the language. But, but one thing that would be very important is that you, you wouldn't want an exception so that someone could say, well, that tree was about to fall down. And you'd want to make sure that there, that they would have to provide professional proof of the condition.
Correct.
So someone could easily say, oh, I took that tree down because it was a danger. And I think you would have to define what the proof you would have to have of the danger.
Yeah, we wouldn't want to create another loophole.
Yeah.
In the process, so. I think, I mean, Steve, Debbie and Shannon, I think the intent is, you know, in, in sort of following the broad directions of this guidance on the PNRC, could we develop some draft language that we could then consider our next work session or a subsequent work session? And we keep moving in this direction to figure out a way to address these loopholes and strengthen the tree code.
I, I think this sounds like a great path forward and to ask our town council to, to develop the language based on the draft material that's been provided and the discussion we've had here, that the guidance we're developing. But we haven't heard from, uh, Councilmembers Rovac or Heller yet. I just wonder if, if they have any further thoughts or comments or, or just agreement that they'd like to share.
I was wondering, um, so this, this is not in relation to the town trees, right? This is just your own trees outside of the town trees? Okay.
Correct.
And, uh, yeah, no, I don't have any other questions about it.
Okay. Are you okay or comfortable or supportive with having this move on to the next step with our town attorney?
Sure.
Okay. Councilmember Heller?
My, it goes back to my original question. The only thing I care about is that this not be too cumbersome and not be a difficult procedure for, for town residents to feel like, oh, my God, I have so much bureaucracy to go through. I got a dying tree in my backyard, you know, kind of thing. And, um, so, but with, without that, you know, I'm ready for it to move on.
Okay.
Also, I was just gonna add, um, you know, this obviously would then go, they would have to follow the same rules for developers that are coming in and wanting to look at houses and tear downs and stuff, right? And then do we have like a quality-to-quality, um, tree? You know, if someone takes down a high-quality tree in, in, in a house that is being re, redone, do they have to put in right now a equal high-quality tree or is that not in the rules right now?
Uh, not in the rules right now. And I would say that if we move forward, we, we would want to make it very hard to take down, period, a high-quality tree.
The, the, the language here does do that job. And
The proposed language, not the existing language.
Language, yes. Um, and, and it, it puts more emphasis on the quality of the tree going in. Nothing's perfect. I mean, you know, if you take out a forty-inch oak, you can't put in a forty-inch oak, you know, that's reality. You can't deal with that.
Right, but you can't put in like a shrub, like call it a tree, you know?
Right, right.
You know, um, one thing you might want to consider, because I know that many times when the previous councils have agreed to building applications which require the, the, um, murder of a wonderful tree. And then you'll have the arborist, when someone says, when the councilor says, well, uh, should, should, should it be replaced somewhere else on the property? You'll, he'll say, no, uh, it already has enough other trees there. Maybe you could put something in the code that says that, that they will, they will put money in a tree fund so that the town, I know this exists in other places. So that, so that that tree that was murdered can be replaced with another tree somewhere else in the town. Isn't that right, Mr. Town Attorney? Aren't there laws that provide for that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
That would really show that you are a tree city.
Yeah. Great suggestion, and that's a sort of, um, modification to the proposal, to the, uh, PNRC's proposal that we could consider. But I think we have, uh, the consensus of the council for the, uh, for our town attorney to, uh, develop some language for us to consider at a future work session. And then we, and then we can move along.
This is Kristen again. Thank you very much. I appreciate all the comments and, um, and ideas, and I look forward to reviewing, reviewing the next, uh, phase. And I think there are some other ideas coming out of the PNRC about how, how, um, this might work in, in terms of reducing the, the cumbersome nature of permitting, um, Councilmember Heller. So hopefully we'll address your concerns as well.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Thanks.
Um, that moves us to one item of old business accessory dwelling units. I guess, uh, I'd ask the town manager to intro this topic.
Sure. So, um, I think this got kicked off last month. The idea of accessory dwelling units and the county rules regarding, receiving a, a permit to have an accessory dwelling unit on your house. And, uh, I, I wasn't at the council meeting last month, but, um, when I went back and, and took a look at the discussion, I, I think the, basically, um, the gist of it was that the council, uh, is interested in considering and perhaps pursuing its own rules, um, for regulating, uh, ADUs and notification of ADU applications. So we have some, some materials here for the council, uh, as part of that deliberation and, um, the next, the next step would then be, uh, to, to have the town attorney, um, draft, draft something. Once, once I, I suppose a substantive enough conversation has taken place and enough parameters kind of given on the direction that the council decides they do or do not want to go.
And, and remember, remember everyone that a legislation passed at the county council level, I think maybe two years ago, that made it way easier for, uh, applicants to, uh, obtain a permit for an accessory dwelling unit without a lot of, uh, input from neighbors. So this is your opportunity, and I'm sure the town attorney can elaborate on this. This is your opportunity to put back some of that, uh, some of those requirements that you have the power to enact. Because, and this came up because the, the county requires notice, these, those signs to go up. And they're huge. And so, so when they, several places, they went up this summer. And then, uh, residents called Matt to, to raise alarm about it. And our response is, well, we don't have any regulation of that. So now is your opportunity to decide whether you want to craft any regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Matt, can you perhaps, uh, describe some of those scenarios or events? I think it'd be illuminating for folks.
Yeah, so, so some of the things and, um, and Ron, I, I, I know is also very familiar with this. So, um, feel free to, to jump in, Ron, if, if, uh, if I'm not accurate in anything that I'm saying, or if you have something, uh, to add. Several of our neighboring municipalities have considered and even adopted ordinances that regulate uh, ADUs. And some, some examples would be, specifically adopting an ordinance that requires they follow the same setbacks as, um, Specifically adopting an ordinance that requires they follow the same setbacks as, um, as any other building. Um, parking requirements. I think some have even set, uh, specific. Heights and setback requirements to accessory dwelling units, so so. Define them within their code and set specific, uh, regulations for those. The county, at the county council level, uh, as as the mayor said, uh, the county council, uh, approved. Uh, an ordinance that, uh, essentially just requires a a hearing before. Before a board that you you say, I have, I have this space, I'd like to to convert it to. Um, an accessory dwelling unit and, um, assuming, you know, safety requirements are met. There's even relaxed, um, setbacks and and things like that for those, basically. As part of the county's larger strategy, which, um, you know, we're also seeing with some of the ZTAs related to. Thrive of, um, providing additional housing. Um, and in in i- increasing the housing stock, uh, specifically. Uh, affordable and attainable housing within the county. Um, so the county's approach has been. Let's try to make it as easy as possible for people to convert, um. Portions of their home or to add an ADU onto their property. And remove some of the, uh. Remove some of the the restrictions that would make it more difficult for people for people to do that.
Thank you for the explanation, Matt. But I got the impression from the mayor that there have been some. Issues or concerns raised in Somerset about ADUs in Somerset.
Yeah, yeah. So so one of the few, one of the few requirements in the county is, as the mayor said, you you have to put this. Big giant sign in front of your property, and you may have even seen some driving or walking around town or biking around town. Um, and it needs to be up for, I think it's sixty sixty days as a public notice. Um, but it really doesn't, eh, all it says is, this is gonna happen essentially, and and somebody. Somebody can challenge it, but, uh, because of the county rules. Folks are basically kind of powerless to do anything. And so some of the concerns people have had were. How do I know, you know, who's moving in? How many people are going to be there? How do I know that, um, there's still gonna be adequate? Parking on the street? And even, um, administratively in the town, it's raised some questions of, well, okay, who's a resident? So who's allowed to vote in our town elections? Who's allowed to use the pool? Um, thi- things like that, so. Those are, those are some of the concerns, um, that that people have have raised. And as the mayor said. People see these big signs and 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 get sort of alarmed and say. What what can you do about it? And right now, it's, you know, and we don't have any any role in, uh, permitting. Accessory dwelling units, so we can point them towards the county, but, um, they they kind of hit a dead end there, because as I said, the counties. Uh, the county stance has been to to promote promote them and kind of remove restrictions.
Okay, um, thank you very much, Matt. That's that's just what I was looking for. Let's go in perhaps a different order this time. Council member, uh. Kumar, do you have some thoughts or comments on ADUs and the direction the town should or could take?
Yeah, I I think I'm I'm supportive of us updating our code to. Uh, regulate ADUs in a way that. Is, you know, sort of adheres to the broader principles behind the sort of building permits and, uh. Uh, thinking around setbacks and things like that. I think from that perspective, we probably should have a viewpoint. We should have an updated code on that front. I'm not supportive of. Fears people have of who's moving in and who gets to use the pool and. I'm sorry, you know, I I don't I don't think those are fears that we should be supportive of of, but I think to the extent that. These units might impede our ability to effectively, uh, you know, implement the building code in particular. I think we would probably want to take a look at it and 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 sort of make sure that we align and make sure there aren't any gaps. Because we know that the county rules can fall short. We've seen that in a number of instances.
Thank you, um. Council member Heller?
I have a couple of questions about it. Um. Do people that live in the ADUs, do they have to pay taxes to the town? Or is this just the homeowner that pays taxes?
The homeowner will pay the real property tax, but a tenant. Who's, you know, working pays income tax, and the town also receives a portion of the tenant's income tax.
And and they, the homeowner's real property tax goes up if an accessory dwelling unit is put on the property, because there's more value in the home then.
My other concern would just be parking. That, you know, I was reading some somewhere in one of these documents that maybe it was a county document that. You know, that you you have to have an off-street parking spot for so for for someone, and I would be very much in favor of that. But not at the expense of, oh, I'll give my tenant the spot and I'll go to the street. You know, um, I think it it'd have to be two parking spots on the property. I I'd want to regulate that in some fashion.
And 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 the town has the power to do that, correct, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
So another issue related to parking, which I think the. The county law change is the number of ADUs in a block. Is that, is that right?
And that's right, Mr. Mayor. It used to be you could only have one if there wasn't another one within three hundred feet on the same.
And that's been a, and that's been eliminated, but does the, does the. Town have the right to regulate the number of ADUs in a block?
No, that, in my opinion, that would be a land use regulation, which the town does not have power.
Let's see, that's. See, that's a shame, and we may remind everyone that we opposed. The change in the regulations to the ADU.
What is in our control, right? Sorry to jump the sequence, but just to plan that, we can come back to it later.
Yeah, so what is within the the town's control are setbacks? Height, parking requirements. You know, set similar building regulations that we impose now for main buildings.
So you're saying that the town has the power to say to an applicant. That if they're going to build an ADU, construct an ADU. That they will have to add one additional parking space to their property?
Yes. Yeah, that's that's permissible.
Like something very reasonable for this council to require.
I I would, one thing possibly to consider with that, and I, you know, this is coming down the pike is as well with. The stormwater committee potentially, but the council may want to also consider. Some type of way to ensure that we're not just promoting. Parking pads in the front, you know, front yards of houses as well to to get around that and and, uh, eliminating green space. Um, at the expense of providing off-street parking.
I appreciate that, Matt.
And and couldn't the council require that the additional parking space be. Built with permeable materials?
Absolutely.
Yes, yep, that's an option.
So you got a lot of, you got a lot of good progressive legislation that you can pass.
I think Shannon wanted to.
Well, I was just gonna say that, um, you know, as far as like the building itself, if you're gonna be building. And I don't know if like a separate garage falls under this or not, but if you're gonna be building a separate. Saying in your yard that in addition to the setbacks and whatnot. We would want to take a good look at the stormwater management. And what adding that space in the roof and all of that does to, um, stormwater. Cause that will definitely have an impact for everything that you put in your land.
Could we, could we, Shannon and Ron, could we say that, oh, sorry, go ahead, Rob?
I haven't had a chance to talk of this yet.
No, no, sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Try to get in. Um, first of all, accessory dwelling units are both the only way we're going to have anything even remotely. Affordable in town to to folks, and we should remember that. In terms of building them into our code, um, we should see them as like any other accessory structure. So therefore, the setbacks applied to them are the setbacks applied to accessory structures. Uh, yes, as as the mayor is saying, we should add, uh, to the built, to the parking requirements, so there should be three slots instead of two slots. For on property for for parking. We do need to require a town permit for ADUs so that. We then review them. But all of our building codes would then apply to to ADUs the same way that we our building codes apply to the rest of properties. So, uh, at the moment, the Stormwater Committee is working on, um, additions. Uh, to renovations to homes, and that will include ADUs. So they will add to what they've done already to give us language to. Require stormwater plans, management plans for ADUs and for other renovations. Um, so anyway, for in terms of our code, yes, um, we should require a permit, town permit for ADUs. We should require parking for ADUs. Um, we should require the same setbacks for ADUs as we do for other accessory structures like sheds. Detached garages and so on. Now, the, not all ADUs are separate structures, some are built into the building.
So eh, eh, so with that, like, I mean, you know, we have a stairs to our basement that could be, uh. Could be a place where we would have a separate entrance and someone could rent out space in our basement. Is that, is that an ADU?
Well, you'd have to modify it. I mean, ADUs require a kitchen, so you'd have to put a kitchen and and bathroom and stuff like that, but yeah.
But yeah, it's a great question. I'm I'm glad you raised it, because we we do have to keep in mind, there's a difference between a attached. ADU and a detached ADU. So an ADU, like you said, can be in the basement. And there, you know, the the same impact perhaps isn't presented. To the town with respect to a detached, you know, a second home on the on the lot. So some jurisdictions have said, for example, you know. If you're putting a ADU in your basement, you know, we're not imposing any new setbacks, the setbacks of your.
Parking.
Your main house apply, but, yeah, we're gonna require that you add a parking space and require that the the parking space. Be consistent with minimum lot coverage or non-vegetative surface coverage, et et cetera. And then, you know, for a detached dwelling, then eh, the issue that towns often struggle with as well, if we. If we say the main building has to be set back eight feet from a side lot line, you know, why wouldn't a second home have the same setback? And why should a second home have a lesser setback? That's been one issue that's come up, or maybe, you know, folks say, well. We don't think the impact is as big for a second home, so, you know, a smaller setback is appropriate. There's. Policy decisions you can deliberate upon.
A deck on it. And a balcony.
Do we have a right, do we have the right to say that, um. ADUs have to be part of your home, you know, like, that you can't build another building on your lot?
No, because that that would be land use. That would be a land use to regulation.
Then then anybody who builds something, how can it not have to fall into the setbacks, you know, um? It has to be part of that much space, and that's kind of hard to do, not unless you're putting somebody in a garage.
Well, we allow accessory structures at the moment, like sheds and and yards, but fall into, you know, and we have setback requirements for the sheds. And what I'm saying is, we should just have the same setback requirements for ADUs. That's it.
Eh, and and to add, unless I'm mistaken, Ron, some some of the municipalities have said. We will apply main building setbacks for accessory dwelling units instead of allowing so. So that they cannot encroach closer like a garage or a shed could, for example.
Yeah, yeah, that's that's been a popular approach in the area. You know, people think about, well, you know, music playing in the house.
I will say that, um, you know, overall, like, I I feel, I I think my. My opinion has changed like a little bit based on all of our thrive conversations, because it is a way to, um. You know, perhaps provide some attainable, affordable housing for some people in our community. Um, you know, as long as it follows the rules and, um. You know, that, so I'm, I I'm definitely more in favor of it based on our thrive. Um, conversations.
This, Mr. Mayor? What is the the next step here? This has been a very good discussion, I believe we've heard from everyone.
I I think the next step here is whether you want to ask the town attorney to draft. Any, some kind of regulatory language that, uh, can be introduced. Or you can, or you can ask them to draft it and discuss it in the next work session. It's the pleasure of the council. I know he's sent a lot of, I know he's sent a lot of information about this over the last few months, but. But it's up to you all whether to decide where you want to, what the process is gonna be.
My sense is that we might need one more work session to try to. Refine or come to consensus on the approach that we think would work best for Somerset, but, uh. But I don't want to delay things. Are there any council members who? Um, would wish to proceed with a specific, uh, path at this time? And 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 would like to ask the, uh, town council to prepare some legislation?
I would, it's al- always easier to respond to specific things, and so, you know, based on. Status of the current conversation, maybe Ron can. Get us going, um, and then we can. We can use that as a starter, sort of.
Well, it does seem like there's a consensus about parking. And I think that is one of the fears that residents expressed to me is like, what's gonna happen? We, because they've seen three, I think there have been three, at least three ADU signs. In town in the last six months, and I think they're mainly concerned about parking. And then I also think that this whole issue of, that was just brought up so beautifully, that if. If you require parking spaces, that they are also stormwater, uh, mindful. Or environmentally mindful.
The the, I I'm, the only thing I would caution is, I I wouldn't want us to like do it in piecemeal. In bits and pieces on on the on the EDU, so. Maybe there is on parking and then there's some, you know, regulation. Ron, that exists in another jurisdiction that could be our starting point, and we can look at that and then. Go from there and use that as part of our discussion. That would be my two cents, Steve, but I'm open to having whichever direction folks want to go.
Yeah, and I I wouldn't worry about stormwater requirements for ADUs. I'd I'd let the Stormwater Committee. Include that in their recommendations to us as they're looking at renovations.
Ron, do you feel you have enough guidance or feedback to to draft something? Or do you have some specific questions to ask to help you?
Yeah, so some. Some basics. Would the council like to see the setback for a detached ADU, the same as the main building? The same as existing detached structures or something in between?
I would go with, uh, same as Robin suggested for now, and then we use that as, that then point becomes part of our discussion.
This, the same as, I'm sorry.
Existing detached, yeah, exactly. As a starting point for us to then discuss.
Okay.
For example.
Good question, good feedback.
Number of parking spaces required for a attached and or detached? Is it one similar to the counties?
One more.
Similar to the counties, is that one?
So, yeah, and the hearing examiner can waive it if sufficient on-street parking is provided.
Oh, we'll go with one and and we can have separate review of it.
And does it have to be a dedicated space for the ADU? Uh, can existing space within a driveway be used? Or does it have to be a newly constructed? Or does it have to be a newly constructed parking pad, for example?
If the driveway is big enough, then it they can construct a space for the ADU out of the driveway. I mean, that was the case uh with the lakes, for example, they have.
Right.
Is that good enough for us?
It is, thank you, and um. The town doesn't regulate height right now, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't add a height restriction for an ADU unless you feel strongly.
The county has height restriction already, and it's cool.
Okay.
Okay, I have enough, thank you.
I have one more request. With that draft, could you also share what other jurisdictions have done, one or two other jurisdictions as well?
Sure, yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
And storm wash to be visited later.
Yeah. Okay, um. We are running behind schedule, but we've covered a lot of ground. Uh, the new business area, the first item.
I I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Steve, I'm sorry, uh, I I know, I know you're trying to move on. Um, one, and maybe I'm getting too much in the weeds, so so you can cut me off if I am, but right now, we. I I'm sorry, never mind, never mind.
Something about the administrative burden related to ADUs?
No, 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 uh, it was about building.
The burden related to Matt, that part, ladies.
It's important, yeah.
It it rela- it related to building, building height, but um. Uh, never mind, it.
Well, we 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 can absolutely.
Setbacks are increased based on the height, Matt, that'll be in there.
Right, yeah, because, yeah, okay, sorry.
All right, that's good. Um, voting eligibility, age, perhaps lowering the uh the minimum age to vote for town residents. I think it's this, the whole topic of uh voting is a great topic, and we need to spend time on it. But there's no, I don't believe there's any urgency to this topic, and I would recommend that we defer this to next month's work session. I just don't want to do, forget about it. We talked about it, I believe, last summer, and council member Kumar reminded me of it a couple of weeks ago. So unless there are any objections, I would like to go down to the town police topic.
Just very quick, for everyone's benefit, this is to reduce the voting age to sixteen.
Right, that's, yes.
Based on what's been happening in other jurisdictions, including in Tacoma Park. So get your, you know, thinking hats on on this, and let's talk about it in the next working session.
Perfect, thank you, thank you very much, Kabir. Uh, town police. Of, Matt, can you give us a a brief there?
Yeah, um, yeah, probably worth a longer and more substantive discussion, but uh at at the highest level, I think. Some concerns have have been brought up about um a lack of. Specific guidance and transparency in the way that. The town police operates and how how they are hired and. What the the general purpose of the town police program is, and um. You all have have received some some messages and memos relating to this, so I um won't get too into the weeds.
So let let me elaborate a little bit. Let me remind you that in. When we had our our extensive orientation and when we were talking about. The areas that are ripe for um some policy. Um, I I pointed out that years ago, when the decision was made to hire police officers. Uh, that's the only decision that was made. There was no accompanying. Policy and procedures for how the program would be run. There there was no guidance on how to hire, who to hire as a police officer. And also how those officers would be trained and or directed slash managed. So this is something that I'm so happy that the council president. Has decided it's time to begin the uh discussion and the process to implement. A police, a policing policy.
Yeah, and and just to quickly add on, these are, these are sort of legacy programs that have existed for a number of years um. That, um, yeah, I think, or as the mayor said.
Never, so there was never any guidance, because I was, I think I was on the council. Years ago when the uh this was included in the budget for the first time. But there was, it was always left to the, to the then clerk to implement a program. And so with succeeding clerks and town managers, it was always at the bottom of the list. And 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 there have been, as you know, there have been, you know, hundreds of complaints over the years and questions that have never been answered.
We are spending fifty thousand dollars a year on the police, yeah.
Right, and and we have no, and and we also have no system of evaluating, and. Many of our of our residents and committee members have pointed all this out, so it's. It the, you know, this is not to point a finger at anyone, it's just. These are the facts that there, we don't have one and we need to have one.
Right, yeah, I I'd say there are two things. In fact, I think Matt's recently got one of them. I hope it's working. Uh, first of all, Matt needs a way to monitor what the police are actually doing. Um, because unless we know what police are doing, we can't really judge them, we can't really come up with any conclusions. I think, have you tried using that doc that we sent you to see if you can track the police activities now? Matt?
Um, yes, yeah, and and we've been getting more, we've been getting regular uh monthly reports from the police over the last few months. Um.
Are you comfortable now with the information you're getting so you can do, you can understand what the police are doing in town?
Yeah, I mean, I have, I have a sense of what they're doing in town. I think. One of the questions um is. At the root of it really is what what is the purpose of our?
That's, that's the other side of it. I mean, that's one half of it, the other half of it, and this is for our job on council, is what is, what we, what's the mission of the police in town? Well, they haven't been given a mission, we just hired them, you know, so. Um, is it traffic control? Is that what they're doing? Is it assisting as a public safety? What what is it they're doing? You know, that that that's it, and and we, the council, need to say that so that Matt then has guidance. We do have a public safety committee, and maybe they should make a recommendation. I got a traffic committee, maybe they should make a recommendation, but that's what we should be doing.
Well, and I know that, I mean, it's definitely timely, because on the public safety committee um. Meeting that we had, I don't even remember, like a month or so ago, you know, there was talk about hiring another police um presence in town. And so I think that it all goes back to just, you know, number one, like, why do we have them? What's their goals? And um, you know, how do we hold them accountable? Um, and how do we have transparency throughout? Um. You know, from what they're doing so that we can educate the town and, you know, kind of show why we're doing all of this stuff. And I think that, you know, if we're looking to hire another person like that, this is a perfect time to reset expectations of, you know, what it is that we want from this program. Moving forward.
Yeah, I I I I want to hear from the other council members, but I. What you just said, Shane, uh, really resonates with me. I think that you sort of need to. Need to rebase line what we're doing here, and this gets back to comments from uh the mayor and 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 Matt and Robin. There's been going on for a decade or more without really a clear um. Program or process in place. Sorry, the screen's frozen up, so I don't know if people can hear me, but assuming that you can, okay, um. My recommendation is that we task our public safety committee to develop a recommendation. Sort of starting from ground zero, recommendation on uh what are our needs? And how could some sort of a. Hired police support uh move us or address those needs?
Yeah, I I would ask some liaise with the traffic committee too, because they. Been involved as well.
Uh, could I, just two words on this. I think, I think I'm in agreement, I think at the highest level, if we don't have a. Program in place or a policy in place for a very important government function, you know, public safety, then we probably need to. And so I appreciate that we are filling that gap. I just want to highlight that I think it's great that we have police presence. I've come to appreciate that in recent weeks, because Officer Alcott is actually the one investigating. The incident where we were zoom bombed, for instance, and I've had a number of interactions with him, so I'm grateful for. For the police presence, but I agree if there's a, that we don't have a framework, we don't have a policy, it would be great to develop that. I'm wondering, Matt, I I would love to hear from Matt if. Whether he feels equipped to co- come up with an initial draft. Of that framework or whether it originates in 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 one of these committees. I'm mildly, I'm just sharing openly mildly nervous of group of citizens. You know, non-elected that are coming up with a framework on a policing policy. But maybe I'm I'm misreading that somehow, and uh but I'm wondering, Matt, what's your perspective on that? I would love to also hear from Debbie, who hasn't had a chance to, you know.
You want to go first?
If you can go to Debbie first, yes, Debbie.
Okay, I I I agree um with Kabir that we, I wouldn't just hand this to the public safety committee. I would hand it to them with a, with a um, an outline um of questions and ask them to run with it. And um, and then hand it over, and then we then we have a framework to go back and forth to each other. And they understand some of our concerns, and um, you know, I think this is great, because I think our residents are are crying out for this. Because they, you keep hearing, what are they doing? What are they doing? And so it'd be great to get into a framework and then have accountability, so um, that's where I stand.
Yeah, um, I I completely agree, Debbie, and and to your point, Kabir, I I think. We're lucky in the sense that I I do believe we have two really qualified and great police officers that are working with us in town. Um, so I I I definitely would feel, I feel equipped and I can, I can take a crack at. You know, drafting something to um, to get the committee to to then take a look at that, uh, to get something off the ground.
I think we should also give the committee a deadline to come up with recommendations.
Yeah.
That's a great idea, too, and uh perhaps Ron can help us uh. Compare what we're considering with neighboring jurisdictions, too.
Yeah, I've I've actually started to reach out to some of our neighboring, it it's, it's, I mean, I think. We're, we're, we're doing good work and being proactive in this, because I think a lot of these municipalities around here started this program. Sort of informally with the same idea that just generally. We'll get the same stuff they do at the county level, but a couple more hours a a month in our jurisdiction. We'll end a discussion, that's it, without any additional parameters, so um, I think, I think this is good.
By by the way, everyone, this is very timely, because all of the polls and surveys. That have been uh produced lately show that the number one issue in our county at this time is not education and transportation, it's crime. So, so I'm glad you're attacking this a topic.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, um. So, am I correct in 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 hearing, Matt, that you think you have enough input from us to? Help us go to the next step and prepare some material that we can, perhaps within the leadership group um. Review and then submit to the appropriate committees?
Yeah, yeah, I I think.
We'll continue with the next work session, too.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say either at the next, you know, I know we, there's, the holidays are coming up, but um. You know, either the next work session or January being the goal, maybe January of. At that point, it will have gone back to the committee and something uh definitive before the council to to start uh considering.
Great, thank you, Matt. Um, last item is committee protocol. Committee processes.
Yep, um, so just quickly, I I started to basically run through um and. Speci- specify some of the requirements from committees and um. Some of, some of them are are just writing down what we've already done, but in in the mayors and and my conversations with. Some of the committee chairs, we've also gotten some really good feedback and incorporated some of those ideas, for example. Um, you know, we've, we've always, we we've been for the last year or so, which was a kind of a first step. Told the committees, we need to adhere to the Open Meetings Act and give notice of these meetings at least forty-eight to seventy-two hours in advance. And I think while on the one hand, that's, you know, that's, that's the minimum threshold we should be meeting. But as we're setting policies to to have good governance, and that's not just doing the minimal necessary. Um, one of the things that we're putting in there is that the committees should ideally be be setting a a. Uh, annual calendar and at the very least need to submit their meetings so that they can be put in the town journal. So that we're announcing our meetings like that, that residents can can participate and take take part in those. And some of what we've seen today with the committee charters is that the committee should be reviewing their charters regularly, setting annual and um. Three-year goals to fit with their committee um, committee terms. Um, and that uh, the committee chairs need to be uh. Need to take the Open Meetings Act training. Um, setting a minimum number of dates for the committee to meet every year. Um, and uh a a recommended minimum number, uh, recommended minimum attendance for committee members to continue on. A specific way that committee members can resign from a committee if they no longer. Feel they want to serve or or can no longer volunteer the time. Um, so specifying some of these ways that the committees should act in a way that. Doesn't just meet the minimum that's necessary so that we're not breaking the law, but um, so that we're actually helping the committees. And giving them a a a framework where they can be part of good governance in the town.
You know, Matt, in the old days, the committees had to publicize, had to have a particular meeting time, so like we do every first, first, you know, Monday. And that's the way it used to be in the old days with, I know I was on the pool committee years and years ago, and that's what I had to do, was a certain day of the month, and that was that.
Well, that's, that's something Jeffrey and I have talked about and and recommended, is that, you know, it helps attendance and it helps, it it. You might think you're you're shoehorning yourself, but it might actually better serve the committee if people know what they're getting themselves into when they volunteer for a committee. Instead of trying to willy-nilly set a meeting here, set a meeting there, um, so.
Yeah, I I like that idea a lot, Debbie. I think it's, that totally makes sense. I think it seems, Matt, you bear a lot of this scheduling.
Right.
Burden, and I, because for some bizarre reason, I'm on a desiglian committee liaisons as well, and I see all these emails, and I think it's. It's kind of crazy, so I appreciate that idea that we said it.
So the idea tonight is uh whether you want to put these protocols, which have been floating around for months, on the December agenda.
Let's do it. I have one question, though, Steve and Robin, which is, do we, Matt, what about if a committee has not been meeting for half a year? For a period of time? Is there some triggering mechanism? To either dissolve the committee and reconstitute it, or I'm wondering if there's something along those lines where we create some incentives for.
Well, well, that would require a code change.
Okay, well, we put that on the to-do list.
That can be on the future work session.
All right.
But don't you think establishing guidelines that say to set your meetings upfront will maybe hopefully alleviate some of that as well? Like, people understand that there's actually meetings that do, that. That are set, that they have to attend.
That's true, that's true.
But I, could I just add a very minor correction? Thank you first, Matt, for doing all the work that you've done. It is a lot of work that you've done here. Uh, there is just one minor thing I would like to add to it, it's to do with the last bullet under um. Committee members. And so as committee members who are unable to fulfill, fulfill their obligations to the committee. Committee members or officers. Who are unable to fulfill their obligations to the committee or who were otherwise not interested in continuing to serve. We resign their spot of committee by, or office by informing the mayor or town manager.
Very good, thank you.
Because we have a committee chair who is having to step down because of ill health.
Now, what's? What's the goal here in terms of? The protocols, it to have a? Have this formalized somehow in the town code or captured in each of the? Committee charters?
Resolution.
So, yeah, yeah, I think by, and Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think by resolution. The town can pass a policy that doesn't need to be in the town code, but similar to, we, we have the pool rules every year and the tennis rules and. We just need a policy that gets approved.
And we do it now?
Committee procedures are. Committee procedures are usually adopted by policy, operating procedures, guidelines, rather than. Code language. You can do it either way, but I think policy is more.
Okay.
It has to be adopted at a council meeting, Councilor Kumar. So we will put that on the, as long as three of you agree, we will put it on the agenda for.
I think we're good. We'll add it to the agenda to the non-consent agenda, the December meeting. And speaking of December. Uh, I think the last item, not on the agenda, but is planning our uh next working session in December. You can go pull out their calendars?
Yep.
And we aren't, we'll be that, that late here, okay, so. So if we're looking at Mondays, like maybe. Monday, December thirteenth?
Looks okay to me.
Oh, I hear a lot of pauses, so seven to nine. Monday, December thirteenth.
I really, sorry to be the outlier, but I will be out of town for the first half of that week.
Zoom, you know, you can still do it from wherever you are.
I can, but I know I will struggle.
Yeah, no problem.
Could, could we do it on the sixteenth? Any chance?
I, I can do it on sixteenth, one, uh, Thursday to sixteen.
Could we um? Could we do that earlier then? You know, like a five thirty to? You know.
That works for me, Shannon.
Okay.
Is it five thirty or five to seven?
It's, it, it, we, we know the sixteenth is a little late for the journalists, you know, like.
It, it's all right.
That's a rolling deadline.
Holidays coming, I, I, I'm feeling for my wife here, the holidays are coming up, you know.
I'm, I might not be able to make that date, actually. I, I, I could probably do it later, but I'm actually um. I'm flying to California on that morning.
What about Wednesday?
It's also a CCFH meeting on, on the seventeenth. That's the coordinating committee of friendship heights.
So, wait a minute, um.
I could do Wednesday.
I can't do.
What time that, now, could you do it later?
Well, I'm having a, I. I could confirm with you tomorrow, I'm looking at. I, I think I. I don't know if what's in my schedule is local time or west coast time. If it's west coast time. Then I'm good. If it's east coast time, it says I get in at two o'clock, so. If it's two o'clock.
Okay, what about, what about uh Thursday, December, what about Thursday, December ninth?
I can't.
Can you guys do Wednesday, the fifteenth?
Debbie cannot, she has another meeting.
Uh, Monday, the twentieth?
Wait, wait a minute, Debbie. Is your only conflict the CCA?
No, it's not, my own. I, I actually, I, it's a volunteer thing and it's.
What, what about, what about the eighth? Is the eighth too close to the council meeting?
I think that's okay.
It's two days ahead, it's just two days from the council meeting.
I, I'm, I'm not available on the eighth.
Let's do, let's do the sixteenth, I think, I think I'll be good on the sixteenth.
Are you sure, Matt?
Yeah.
Well, you know what? And if you can't, Matt. Perhaps uh.
Linda, if, if you can't, then Linda will do it and we'll fir- work it out. Let's just do it on sixteen and.
Start at seven P M, which feels.
We'll figure it out, we'll figure.
And seven P M, right?
Survive without Matt.
No, we can't do it later, we have to do it five thirty to seven thirty on December sixteenth.
That's fine.
All right, that's good, we'll, we'll, we'll work it out.
Okay. Thank you all.
Great meeting, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanksgiving.